I still can't hear the boardroom, it's muted.
Okay.
Now, now I've got sound. I thought you guys were being awfully quiet for a roomful of people.
Well, in fact, we actually were.
Well, that may be the case. All right, let's get started. I want to call this meeting to order. Because this is our first time holding the hybrid and we've got a lot of tech things to try to work out. I've asked the vice chair, Director Larson, to take over the chairing duties just so that my tech issues don't become part of what's keeping the the meeting going longer. We've got a lot to cover. So I'm going to hand it over to you Andrea. Thank you so much for doing this.
Okay, thank you. And. Let me see. So citizenship awards.
We have a Vania one, we also have the January one from Almira.
I mean, I'm looking for the person who is going to talk about.
We'll pull in, we'll pull in the Almira elementary person from January.
Okay.
They're here, hang on just one second. She's, she's there.
Did you want me to go ahead and share for Cameron?
Yes, please, Miss Tom.
Okay, so I nominated Cameron for the citizenship award for January. He is the absolute epitome of a citizen in our classroom. I was able to give his mom a few examples of ways that he's been a citizenship in our room. A big one that he's taken on himself is making sure that our lunch cart gets back to our classroom. And he's totally taken that responsibility on himself. So after lunch, he'll go and take, grab the lunch cart and he's taken that on himself. And so I'm really, really proud of the progress that Cameron's made, not only as a citizen, but academically as well.
That could be the loudest applause ever.
And for Vania Elementary, February citizenship award goes to me by Ruby. Stay standing. Okay, so. Larson, this year's teacher is fifth grade teacher. So then he participates energetically in every lesson, he works diligently and communicates well with partners and groups. Other students include and seek him out in academic and social situations, showing that he's both well loved and respected by his peers. He consistently sets a great example to others and is a delight to have in class. I also got quotes from the other teachers. I'll give these to you instead of taking another semester reading them. Congratulations.
And now both would lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Whenever you're ready.
I'm sorry, ladies. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right there, perfect.
Cameron, why can't your picture be put up?
Okay, we'll, we'll get you in there, that's okay.
You're too busy with the choreography.
I need to leave it right there.
Okay. All right.
If you were here just for that and you want to leave, we'll give you. Good job, Cameron.
So next on the agenda is classified appreciation week.
Yes, I just wanted to mention. Next week, classified appreciation staff week, our classified staff are, for the most part, our instructional assistants, our secretaries, our custodial agents, so, so around the district. We'll be recognizing them in many ways. And I just wanted, wanted to note it here at the board meeting that that's happening next week. They certainly are the, the guru that holds the ship together, so very much appreciated. And we will bestow them with all kinds of gifts and love next week.
Good. And next, Lane African American Black Students Success Program.
Yeah, I wanted to introduce our navigator this year. The, this program is through the ESD. The purpose of their program is to improve academic outcomes for African American black students and to achieve a vision of equitable education system in Lane County. Working with the LSD and their student navigators, we set goals and the student navigator assigned to us is Shanae Joyce Springer. Shanae has met and visited each of our campuses and is working to build relationships with our students. She provides them with information about upcoming community events and opportunities and helps look at our data in our district in regards to academic achievement in order to improve strategies and success for these students. So Shanae is here and I just wanted her to be able to say hi to you guys and you will be able to hear her.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be before you on tonight. I'll be brief because everything I think I was going to share has been shared. And, and I just second and champion that initiative of the African American Black Students Success Program, even for those students within your community and school district. And I actually am now the interim program coordinator for the program, but I am still committed to showing up and Fern Ridge School District on a bi-weekly basis to touch bases with your students, staff and administrators that serve those students that our program serves. So thank you all for having me on tonight. Everything I think I was going to share has been shared. And, and I just second and champion that initiative of the African American Black Students Success Program, even for those students within your community and school district. And I actually am now the interim program coordinator for the program, but I am still committed to showing up and Fern Ridge School District on a bi-weekly basis to touch bases with your students, staff and administrators that serve those students that our program serves. So thank you all for having me on tonight.
Thanks, Shanae.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Okay. I'll just keep jumping forward because that reminds me as well. My Gary Sue Christian Award in Science. Gary is here, I believe, hopefully you can hear me. I will pull him into the meeting. Gary, I first met Gary, I want to say about eight years ago. He donated, Gary graduated from Almira High School a couple of years ago. And their teacher at Almira High School, a science teacher by the name of Harold Plateau, motivated Gary to pursue his love and career of science. I don't know his exact title, one of his last jobs was some kind of mucky mucky for him in University of Washington Science Department. Gary just won Sue, that's about eight years ago, gave $10,000 to the school district and for our annual student that was a science student of the year. Usually interest made on that $10,000, it was just in a savings account and they got a hundred dollar scholarship with their award. Well, speaking to Gary over the last year, we started meeting last year, he wanted to increase this award. He donated an additional $45,000 to the district last year and just a few weeks ago donated an additional $45,000. So the total of this account now is over $100,000. And we have, now, since it's grown so much, we've, before we weren't investing it. Turn on that money, each year will. Each year, or the first year that they were, because the last $45,000 was accounted, our student will receive around a $25,000 scholarship. And beginning next year, it'll be around $4,600 or $5,000, depending on the market and other things. But obviously just a tremendous, generous thing that he and his wife did. I'll turn it over to you, Gary, for anything you want to say or add.
Oh, can you see me, hear me?
We can see you.
Yeah, okay, okay. Well, it's really my great pleasure. And Harold Plateau was a remarkable teacher. He was at Almira Union High School, as it's called most days, from 1950 to 1955. And he was a biologist. And he, I, he taught me general science, chemistry, physics and biology. He was my track coach. He took little Almira High School to championship meets. We, we beat all the big track teams in the Portland schools and so forth. And so, and he's really a character and, and a good friend. So he wound up helping form Coestor College down in San Luis Obispo, California. He was head of the biology department there and so forth. He taught there for 25 years and was very popular and made great impact there. But I remained a good friend with him his whole life. He died a couple of years ago in his nineties. He was quite a remarkable guy. And, and it's, he really wanted to come to the first award, but he'd reached a stage we couldn't travel anymore. So what I'm going to do, he has a son who teaches high school. His name is Fred Plateau and then, and that area down there. And I'm going to let him know about this new award and, and so forth. He'll be pleased. So. And I'm very, very happy that the, the OCF will be taking charge of this now. You know, when I set this up originally 10 years ago, it was only $10,000 and there wasn't enough money ready to give much of a scholarship. So now it's got enough, as Gary was saying, to give $4,000 or $5,000 scholarships this year in perpetu- in perpetuity, which is great. So that's the way I wanted to get it set up. So I'm really pleased for, for this opportunity. And, and I'm pleased to be able to be on the committee for the first few times, maybe to see how this works out. So I'm looking forward to that first award and getting, getting the applications.
Great. Well, I know on behalf of the board and everybody at the high school and the community, we're certainly grateful to you and your wife and will hopefully have you, you or, or Mr. Plateau's son at the award ceremony to make the, end up first checked.
Yeah, yeah, great, great. Go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay. So, looks like we have five people signed up to speak. And Michelle has provided their intent to speak in the order that they were received. So the first person is Allison Garner.
Hi. Good evening, board members and everybody here tonight. My name is Allison Garner, resident of Fern Ridge District. I have served on the Fern Ridge District Budget Committee, member of the district's key communicators group, PTA member, local business owner and parent of a fourth grader and seventh grader attending Almira Elementary and Fern Ridge Middle School. In respect of time allowed, I'm asking that the board members read and review my full written statement as well as some documents in regards to my request to have the district pursue adding an athletic director in some capacity to support an athletic program at the middle school. In short, after researching the Llamada Valley Youth League that our middle school athletes participate in, most all schools have an athletic director at the middle school level, but the district does not. Those that have in-house middle school sports and athletic director include Junction City, O'Hara, Hudson Hill, Oak Ridge, Monroe, Central Lynn, Willamette Christian, Cottage Grove, Presswell and Lowell. Our middle school athletics are currently ran through territorial sports program. We currently have a gap in communication and participation between athletics and the district at the middle school level. This can be seen through academics where grades are not checked, accessibility and transportation issues, to name a few. I believe the board needs to advocate for investing in a sports program that the community can be proud of as well as one that is accessible to all students. I have reached out to the athletic directors within our Llamada Valley Youth League and compiled information for your review that supports my request. I have included my full written statement spreadsheet with league athletic program information, job descriptions, athletic budgets, as well as a few comments from other athletic directors. I ask that this topic be added to the board's agenda in March. If you have not saw the full written statement as well as all my documents, if you haven't received those, just.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Allison.
All right. Thank you very much. Jessica Caldwell.
Ask me if that's a video for my statement.
And Andrea, I can't screen share both the timer and this, so do you want me to time it on my phone?
I'll just.
Do you have it done?
Yeah.
Just tell me when you're ready.
Perfect.
Okay, I got it over here. Okay, started. All right. Great, good.
Finally, we're at page seven, about respiratory hazards. When the oxygen concentration in normal breathing air drops below 19.5% by volume, the air becomes oxygen deficient, a significant concern for those who work in confined spaces. Harmful effects include impaired thinking and coordination, unconsciousness and death. Notice that it repeats that information again, only this time it says, "When the concentration drops below 19.5%, the air is oxygen deficient and considered immediately dangerous to life and health", abbreviated as IDLH. Okay, so go ahead and pick your first mask. Which one are you going to use? So he's going to use a regular cloth mask first. So you can see the, the room is sitting at 20.9% oxygen, right? That's just regular air that we're all breathing right now. Okay. You feel good that that's a good balance, that's where it's going to sit? Okay, so whenever you're ready, go ahead and insert the, the plastic nozzle into the mask. And then, I don't know if anybody's got a timer here or not. Gotcha. So he's going into the mask now and you can see the numbers start to instantly change. 20.6, 5, 4, 3, 2. I don't need to count down, y'all can read. It's 19.7, 19.5, there's the alarm. "Imminent Danger to Life and Health" by OSHA, right there. 2.
Let it keep going, let it keep going.
That's the, Devin just said, in the field, they get out. So we're down to 18.9. Yeah, somebody check on Garrett, all right? Make sure he's still good.
This is a 12-minute long video, but I chose two minutes out of because some time is straight. Unless it's 20 seconds and all the masks tested, that alarm went off. My son is in an unsafe environment due to lack of oxygen because of his mask that he is required to wear so he can attend a public school in person. Tomorrow, the state of the union will take place, mask optional, but our students and staff have to wear them to attend school. The advisories we have followed to keep our school safe have done the exact opposite. They have had huge negative impacts on academics, mental health, attendance and behavior. In receiving extra funds, one, two and three, the district received COVID bride money to keep masks on students and staff, require vaccines and segregate the unvaccinated, as seen by the whole defense when they haven't done that. They've also held vaccines in schools when parents aren't allowed it. This requirement has made mode of medical treatment inclusion and discrimination.
Please sit down. I'm sorry, but in all fairness, we all get, you all get three minutes.
Is it fair enough that it took an extra 15 minutes to turn the video off from where I asked? I have about 10 seconds left.
Go ahead.
This and the requirement of mode of medical treatment, segregation, inclusion and discrimination are not only unethical but unconstitutional and defy Fern Ridge School District policies. This here is your oath of office, where you are sworn to uphold both. If you are unable or unwilling to do so.
I'm sorry, that's, that's more than one second.
You need to resign.
What do you want to use?
Good evening. I'm the mom to a third grader at Vania Elementary. I moved my child into your school district as kids were returning to the classroom in February 2021. I don't regret that decision because she's made many wonderful friends and she adores her teacher. I'm very disappointed in the continued masking and the mistreatment of teachers, support staff and parents based on vaccination status. I realize and appreciate you have made the decision to make masks optional. And while that's great news, the choice to cover our children's faces never should have been yours to make. What I'm actually here to talk about is how are we going to treat vaccinated versus unvaccinated kids moving forward? Ready school state learners say that, and I quote, "Schools work in a collaborative manner with local authorities as parents to advise and consult on health and safety protocols with schools. In general, decisions of school health and safety reside with the school and district officials", end quote. This board has the ultimate authority to decide how they want to move forward and whether or not they will apply equal treatment to each and every student. You and I vote, and I know that's important to you guys. I know, that's one of the reasons I moved into this district. You and I both know that you're not beholden to any local, state or federal entity in making these decisions. So I urge you to do what is right and not put the onus on anyone else. Your vision statement says, "Provide excellence for every student so that each will reach their greatest potential." If you make any decision that allows mistreat- the mistreatment of children who are not vaccinated, you'll not only be going against your very own vision statement, but you will be unleashing the anger of parents like myself and many others who refuse to allow their children to be discriminated against due to being unvaccinated or any other reason, for that matter. I will not allow you to send my child home if she's in contact with a COVID positive individual and miss out on instruction while you allow a vaccinated child to stay in school. Vaccinated individuals can and have spread COVID just the same as the unvaccinated. This vaccine does not prevent this from occurring. We need to get rid of these labels, stop identifying people by their inoculation status and treat everyone the same across the board. And this goes for the amazing teachers and support staff that you discarded when they did not mention your will. It has been 717 days since the virus upended our lives. The pandemic is over. Our kiddos have been far more adversely affected by these mitigation tactics than the actual virus and your actions moving forward will say a lot about you. Please use common sense, park your bias outside of this boardroom and remember, us parents are watching you and we are not ignorant. We are, however, fierce advocates for the well-being of our children and we will hold you accountable. Amen.
We have a partner?
Dear board members and Superintendent Carpenter here tonight, my name is Brianna Carney. My three children are students in the Fern Ridge School District. I speak to you today, the leaders of our school, to express my concerns surrounding the updated mandate requirements. The new release, the news released yesterday to make masks optional is a great step in the right direction, especially after viewing the video tonight. The current rules from OHA have yet to be updated. As they stand now, create several concerns that need to be addressed. First is social distancing, returning back to six feet from its current three feet, creating again challenging social and learning environment. Second, the return of contract tracing, resulting in a significant increase of stress to already overworked staff. And third, the current quarantine requirements that absolutely introduce segregation and discrimination into our schools. This is based solely on a personal vaccination status. The unvaccinated and non- booster being required to isolate away from school, teams and friends with no access to education, even if symptom-free, while the fully vaccinated have no restrictions at all. This is based only on a vaccine that has not been proven to stop or even slow the spread of COVID or any variant to date, resulting in the unvaccinated isolating alone at home and the fully vaccinated potentially continuing to spread the COVID, creating an unbalanced, unfair school environment. This is a very concerning direction and makes no sense. You are the elected leaders of our school. You chose to accept these positions by swearing an oath to follow the constitution and the policies adopted by our district to put forth first and foremost the welfare of our district students. It is your responsibility to take back control of our district, to focus on the discrimination our school is currently facing. Over the last several months, your leadership has been one of the furrow between each other or to OHA or ODE, who have clearly stopped listening to both Oregonians and more recently to the CDC guidelines. You are all now in a position to take back local control of our district. I urge you to do just that. Help return normalcy to our district, allow parents and grandparents back on school brands to, to support our students and teachers. Bring back the staff who were unfairly made to leave. As it stands now, our children are depressed, current staff is overworked and regular building maintenance is falling behind. Please don't let these mandates and vaccine discrimination ruin our schools. Have the courage to stand together and do what's right for our kids and district. If you're not up for that challenge, consider resigning so someone else can. Thank you very much.
Krista Spencer?
Hello, good evening to the board, Mr. Carpenter, everyone else. My name is Krista Spencer. My initial intention for, intention for speaking this evening was to strongly encourage the board and Mr. Carpenter to change the requirements of masking our children to optional, not mandatory going forward. But in light of Governor Brown's recent continual changes to the lifting of the state mandate, I don't have to do that. So instead, I'm looking to the future. A future where my child, all students, faculty and parents and individuals are in control of making their own personal medical decisions, not medical decisions being made by government leaders and bureaucrats that have continuously politicized a virus we should have rightly been concerned about in the beginning to a virus we're supposed to be scared of. The continued threat of an injection enforced masks, masking in our community, especially our children, has caused irreparable harm. This has been reinforced with the bribery of federal funding, more political bureaucrats, special interest groups and our own elected officials to continue to mask children, the least likely impacted group in our society, and to essentially fire employees that refuse to be injected and all without a second thought to natural immunity. This is all to say, I strongly encourage the board and Mr. Carpenter to have the courage to make our own path here in the district. To make a path that will return us to including everyone, a path without restrictions that exclude or divide. Make masking and COVID injections optional. By blazing this path, you will open the door to alienated employees to return if they wish or even will, to help alleviate the current overworked staff. It will allow for parents and guardians to again volunteer at our schools and will allow for the school community to once again see each other, for the kids to see each other's faces, to see their smiles, to see emotions. My son is a sixth grader. There are very likely kids in his class that came from the other elementary school that he has never really even seen their faces, their whole faces. Same with his teachers. And as you decide to blaze this path of no restrictions and alienation, keep asking yourselves, why would our leaders insist on continuing to mask our children? It's about money and control. Please do not be lured by the dangling carrot of more federal dollars to continue this unscientific control. Most everyone has done their part and complied. It's time to stand up for our children and move forward with options. With returning the choice to families and individuals, moving forward with no mandates and into the future school years. Rally our school community together. I'm sure you've all been seeing and read the news. Parents have become more and more aware of what's going on in our schools nationwide. I strongly suggest you get ahead of it. There's not much that can be done about what has already happened, but there is much to be done moving forward. And you all have the opportunity to do what's needed to make our schools an inclusive place where everyone is free to make the decisions that are best for them and their families. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone for your very passionate testimony. Let's see. It's like approval of minutes. It's like approval of minutes. Put the motion.
I will say to approve the January 24th, 2022 meeting minutes as written.
I'm second. It's been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? Let's see. So Tiana, what do you say?
Tiana says aye.
And everyone else?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Let's see. Enrollment report. Juan, are you? Somewhere. Whenever you ready, Juan.
All right. Thanks, Michelle. This is our enrollment report as of February 1st. Our total in district enrollment is 1,277 students. That's down 111 students from our budgeted numbers. Thirty-six of those students are at the elementary level, 30 are at the middle school level and 45 are at the high school level. I did want to note some of the high schoolers are due to early graduation graduates. So there's probably about eight or 10 there. Yeah. And also I did pull, we pulled another report today and we actually gained 15 students since I ran this February 1st report. So that's good. So we lost some, but they're coming back. Does anyone have questions?
Doesn't look like it.
I have a question. It looks to me there's a large jump in the options program at the high school. Is that correct or am I reading that wrong?
What?
That there was a large jump in the options program at the high school level?
From prior months? I don't know. I don't have the prior months in front of me. But I could look at that and get back to you. Oh, thank you.
That was an audience member. Moving on to the general fund and revenue report.
Yep. All right. That's our general fund and revenue expenditure report as of January 31st. Due to the audit being finalized, we were able to record our beginning fund balance, which you'll see up at the top right-hand corner there. It's the rollover from 2021. That amount came in about 7% higher than projected and that was due to underspending in 2021. The rest of the revenues were at 77%, which is on track with where we normally are at this time of the year and with our budget. We've spent 41% of our operating expenditures, which is slightly lower than where we normally are, but not too drastic. We're usually around 44% this time of year. And that's about all I have. Next month we will be receiving our common school fund payment. So you'll see that on the report. Other than that, does anyone have questions?
She's directing that to the board members. I'm sorry, but.
Will we be asked for questions at the end?
No, I'm sorry. But you can, you can absolutely send your questions to Michelle and she will make sure that they get answered.
Thank you so, so much.
Take a motion on the revenue and expenditure, expenditure report.
I'm making a motion to approve the January 31st financial report.
It has been moved in seconded. Any discussion or questions? Tiana?
I say aye.
The rest of us?
Aye.
Five zero. So West Lane Charter School Report.
I think we have Mrs. Dohler here.
Yes, I am here. Thank you for having me. I wanted to start West Lane Charter School. We're just going to show just a very short little video that we put together this year with a former graduate of West Lane Charter that just kind of shows who we are in a brief little snapshot. Go ahead with that.
Hi, welcome to West Lane Charter. We're a public high school that offers virtual and in-person learning in Veneta, Oregon. At West Lane Charter, you can come in and work in person with your teachers or you can work from home. You don't have to be in school for six or seven hours a day. You can come and go as you need to. If you have a job that starts at noon and just want to get in a few hours of work with a teacher or in a quiet lab space, you can do that and then head off to your job. You can work from home as well and meet virtually with your teachers, one-on-one or in a small group virtual class. We have several CTE programs that we offer. One of them is technical informations. Another one is health sciences and then we have culinary as well. We have students able to take classes that can get them into the careers they want at a higher level than introductory. So they can start off making higher salaries. They get the career industry certifications they need. And they're really at a higher level of knowledge getting that job over someone else that just has a diploma. So when your student comes, we sit down as a team and we look at what their transcript says and what they want to do in their life. And we build their schedule and their classes specifically for that one student. You should enroll your student at West Lane Charter because we really provide flexibility with scheduling and how school can happen for your student.
So we get asked a lot who we are and what we do. And so we just created that to give just a little bit of information to people. So on to the current school year, a little different than last year, but getting somewhat back to normal. West Lane Charter added a full-time counselor this year for the first time. And in just a short amount of time already, he's been able to make some amazing progress and some amazing additions to our school. We now have a suicide prevention program. It adds another tier to our attendance tracking system, which we, we work on weekly trying to get kids to attend, making sure they're completing the work they need to complete to stay on track. We have a career information system that we use for, it's a required course, but we have kids get in it and then we help build their schedules from some of the information that comes out of that and do personalized plans for them according on that, to that information. He is working with staff to implement a progress monitoring system and teachers are using that also weekly. It flags immediately when kids are not making adequate progress. So we can check in with them, check in with their parents, see what's going on, what we need to do, how we can help. We've established regular communication systems with students and parents in ways that work for them. A lot of our kids, the typical systems haven't worked. And so we're working on ways that we can connect with them. We offered an onsite support for the FAFSA this year, which was a first for us, which is helpful because kids, that's a hard system to navigate. And so he's been able to work with families and help get them connected with that. And then, as you saw in the video, we have three fully operational CTE programs this year. We've had the culinary and hospitality and tourism program for several years now. One of the great things they did earlier this year was cooked the turkeys for the Kiwanis dinner locally. We cooked nine turkeys for them, which was pretty exciting. And then this year we've added the health sciences program, which offers a first aid CPR certification for kids. It's just one of the things that they could come out of that with. And then the informational technology. And they're working, one of the things they've done right away is work with the 3D printer and coming up with some things they're going to produce with that. We have nine College Now courses, most in the CTA area, but not all. And we're working on adding more of those too for kids who are interested in going that route. And then one thing we're doing this year, which we've built on from years in the past, is meeting weekly as a staff. We're talking about what's working, what can we improve, what students need our support the most. It's always a work in progress whenever there. And so we are continuously meeting and making any changes we think we need to. One of our successes, which is, is far from where we want to be, but is a graduation rate. We have increased our graduation weights by 21% in the past four years. They're nowhere near where we want. We're always striving to make them higher, but that's a pretty big increase. Our goal is 2% a year. We've surpassed that. And so we're hoping that all these other things that we're putting in place and our weekly meetings and the communication and contact with students and parents will just keep raising those. We get a lot of kids who are credit deficient. They're way behind. And so we're working to help them make progress. And if that means for our teachers that it's after hours in the evenings or on a weekend that they need to do a Zoom with a kid to help them with a problem or something they're having on an assignment, teachers are willing to do that. So we really try hard to meet kids where they're at and help them grow as much as we can in the time that we have them. The other thing that we're doing, and we know the research shows the positive behavior supports. So we reward kids when they're doing well. We give them incentives to do well and to work harder. So we are rewarding monthly attendance. We have groups that we meet. Once a week we have a Dungeon and Dragons group or we have a craft knitting club, trying to do things in the afternoons towards the end of the day. One that brings kids into school because they're excited to do those things at the end of the day. And it gives them that social interaction that they crave and need and don't get enough of sometimes. And then we do, we have a monthly movie. They can earn, it's, it's a nonfiction or documentary movie and we let them choose, but that also gives them some social interaction. And we make it educational. So we talk about it. We're working on adding some field trips, educational field trips back in as restrictions drop and we can get kids out in the community and making some rewards out of that as well. And then we have our goals. We're continuing to work on improving attendance. The goal is by 3.5% each year. That's been a little challenging as the way attendance is tracked over the last couple of years keeps changing on us. But we know we want kids there more often. And so we're, we're working on that. We also continue to focus on the graduation rates. That is a huge goal. And then we're working with our kids to set weekly goals. So breaking things down into small chunks for them. So they're manageable. Not that you need to graduate in four years, but what do you need to do this week and then next week and break it down. So they're feeling that success and smaller portions to keep them on track. And then number one, I think the biggest thing is just continuing to make connections with kids and help them to feel wanted. School may not be their favorite thing. So how can we make it something manageable for them and fit into their lives and those connections with teachers to help them through? So that's kind of West Lane right now.
Thanks, Arson.
And I do want to point out that the, the two documents, your questions without, are, are available online so that you can see the actual numbers and so that you can ask Michelle about them.
Of the, the attendance?
Yeah.
Okay. But the budget be online too? Because when I looked, the last budget available was May 19th of 2020. And when you follow the link, it's not available at all. There's a projected tester budget, but there's not actually a budget online unless I'm looking in the wrong spots.
Okay. You're filing a, we do a budget once a year.
Thank you.
Okay. If I wait until the end of the meeting, I won't remember. Think that up. So next, facilities update.
That would be my.
That would be yours.
I requested from superintendent that I have an opportunity to address the board and bring up some, I know you want some of the projects we've been working on and some of the things that have needed attention and how we're addressing those needs. So we have a little bit of a PowerPoint here. Let's go to the next one. That one's just a cap sheet there. So I'd like to introduce some of our staff to you. We have Dan President and Dylan Rice. Dylan is the one here tonight. But Dan is, is primarily a grounds individual and Dylan is, he works a lot with the facilities in the, in the mechanical side of it. I have a custodial staff, which you don't see there. We have an open position that we have posted statewide, but we've got to, I believe, get the other ones for that open position. So we still already need a more custodial staff. So I do have Quinn Larson, who is for the first time a day custodian, who helps cover the things that that need to happen during the day, which typically would be done at night. So it leaves, leaves some of the pressure from our night custodial staff. Please. So these are some of the projects we have been working on the last couple of, well, for a year, about a year and a half. These are the things that are complete or almost complete. So the commons bathrooms there in the middle school are done. They were in desperate need of some upgrades and we've done that. The commons at the middle school, we, that should read changed to polished concrete, not normolium. So that's a lifetime type of floor surface that is easy to maintain. We recited some of the middle school refurbers to track the walking track. We just added some gravel for that. Fernbridge Girl School, we, middle school, we have a LED light conversion. We're partially done with that. But because of some delivery issues and some supply issues, we've had to wait till this summer to complete that. But we're on track to do that. When, at the high school, we have what is known as a hydraulic heating system where the boiler heats the water and pushes it through the system to heat the rooms. Identified several key components that need to be rebuilt and we completed that project. The painting is some stain damage. In this country, water penetration into the roof is, is common and the media often have stained and we address those. We've replaced carpet with a hard surface, easier to clean and sanitize. The infamous bathtub cave was addressed. That cave was a room that was at Veneta Elementary School and the staff, the teaching staff and IAs did not get in there. But we've convinced some of the bats are gone. We found a little hole in that for the bathroom committee. Better days than you want it to be. We have now a car, an undercar charging station. I think there's two, four or two areas where they can charge undercars. That was done through a grant. That included some concrete work and some underground work that was completed. The portable classroom is completed. We're waiting for the final inspection. We could use that, but the staff has moved in. Everything is complete there, ready to be used soon as we have the final inspection. There was new playground equipment installed under a contractor at the Alonra Elementary. The school did pay for the installation where there was a fundraiser grant that raised a money for the equipment just. So we also have parking lots, cleaning and striping and some things that we have done over the last summer. So major projects for the 2022 year. So what you're looking at in that picture, what they call a fire pump control panel. That panel needed replacement. That panel is a $15,000 investment that you guys made in the pump system. What you need to understand, Fernbridge District is in kind of a unique position in that we have many infrastructure things that specifically would be held by the city's alley, such as our drinking water, such as our sewer system, pre-treatment system. We also have two of these large fire pumps. They're diesel pumps that need to be maintained. They need to be certified yearly. So we, we have a program to do that. So we've been into a service contract with a PAFA cap to service our diesel engines. We have also established in-house inspection testing schedule where we are required to maintain the schedule and test those pumps monthly. We've been working with coast authorities, fire, local fire department. So he's been a big help for us there. The next thing I want to point to is our fire alarm panels. We have throughout all of the schools, fire alarm panels, some in various stages of, of some of them need to be upgraded. As you can see there that we have identified some failed incompatible panels. As you can see there that we have identified some failed incompatible panels. But we have an upgrade on that. Dylan, would you kind of fill in what we've, I've asked Dylan to handle some of the situations. They're great job at finding out. But please explain what we mean when you said we have a system upgrade. Can you do that for us, please?
It would just be essentially the the brain of what tells even there is a fire in a school, there's panels. You've identified that there is some problems with a panel at one of the schools. We actually tracked down the parts for that. So we've been working on that issue.
So when we, when we went out and began to talk to subcontractors, they were warning us about a fifty thousand dollar upgrade for just the middle school. That's just one school. The other schools were in good shape, but we were able to locate a repair part that actually had been purchased for by the district. We're assuming about two thousand and it was hidden in the basement. It's a ten thousand dollar circuit panel that was meant to be installed there. We located it. And we've identified it as compatible with our system. So we're we're scheduled to install that and that should address and eliminate that fifty thousand dollar bill. A great find on Dylan's one. We have done some along monitoring service evaluation. One of the things that has happened recently is that our auto diapers, which are components at Benita Elementary and Ferbman Ridge, Elmira Elementary and Denny Elementary. They were auto diapers. The fire alarm goes off at College Central Station. Those were four G auto diapers. We were required to replace them with five G. When we did that, we also changed our monitoring and made it more accessible for the staff that needs to be to be able to put things in test mode. So these are ongoing projects that we are finding solutions for. So in a heating system, you've probably heard that there's been some days when it wasn't as warm as people would like it. And I'm sure you have heard of that. These are actual pictures of actual components in our district. That's our main border to high school. So one of the things we did find out is we're behind schedule in our inspections. We brought our inspections up to up to lights. We replaced and rebuilt circulation pumps that had, was tied for them to be. Some of these are twenty years old at the time we rebuilt. I've set a schedule for Dylan to do a valve exercise. There are numerous valves and these that need to be on and off. So they'll be needed there to work. When we say a water treatment program, we are treating the hydropathic water that feeds the building. That needs to be maintained. That's a way that has corroded components. We've also had the air hammer survey or hammer our components in all the schools that have hydraulic systems that need to be maintained and that takes the blows air over the coils which has hot water which feeds the water. So those surveys have been done and done and we've identified a number of components that we need to be worked on so that we can continue to provide heat in a an evenly throughout the building. So we have hot spots and cold spots because of some of these issues. Anything else? Heating, more. So the heating systems themselves, we have control systems that are software. Some of it is antiquated software. Some of it is only located on the computer in the schools and some of it is actually online. I can control it from any place I can get online. So all three of the systems that are a little bit different, we learned their idiosyncrasies. What you see up there is a picture of the valve that failed, that location where valve was. That was one of our main failures is that valve and we went out to find that valve and replace it. It happened to be antiquated and the only place we could get it was back east. And it was weeks, months out. And so we bypassed it for now until we can come up with a solution. So we're back operating, but that was a challenge. We use Merp thirteen thirteen filters as part of our cold response. There's a total of four hundred and forty-seven filters in the district. They're replaced every six months. So that's a, that's a week's job for somebody to go through and replace those. So we have new ones ordered in the factory in the warehouse now waiting for the next schedule for We also have a lot of kitchen equipment, the district codes. One of the things that we found out is that some of the things that needed to be done haven't been done. Established a de-scaling. So when we use a piece of equipment of options, we do like kitchen equipment developed a scale, which affects its performance and we've had to establish contracts, de-scaling, death schedule. We've improved our soap and rinse injection systems that allows us to save some money on the food service end and they get more compliant with health regulations. We have ongoing work orders from all sorts of things that are beginning to show their nature in the district within daily So one of the things we have done is we have to one of the things the district are responsible for is our drinking water system. That system is overseen and it has the jurisdiction for that is Maine Health Authority and the state of Oregon. So if you maintain compliance for that, it's a pretty strict compliances. We have contracted with Delta Operations to do that. And they were out today working on our system today because we had an incident where it was not reliable. So we called it down, but there came out that takes a lot of pressure off our limited maintenance staff. It allows us to do things that through the limited staff we have, we can progress out with. We've replaced our injection pumps and upgraded those so they're more reliable so that when we turn our weekly or monthly reports into the state, we don't have to be for two thousand parts. So we're working towards that goal. What's next? We need to fill that open custodial position. We need to continue to stream processes and systems. We're creating calendar schedules that are easy communication and the one look provides some things that need to be done. So when either Dylan or I are not present, we're not here anymore. The next individual, it doesn't have to be them. We have some long range documents and planning we need to do, apply for budget, print budget, things that need to be upgraded. And this is a ongoing thing that we need to document for future. So that's where we're at. That's where we've been. We've still got a long way down the road, some ways to go before I'm very comfortable, certainly comfortable with the system. Is there another slide? I'm open to any questions or clarifications if you have it. But I would want you to express or let you see what we can do.
Well, thank you. It's a lot. It's a lot. It's a lot. You've been very busy.
So one thing I don't think most people understand is just the expense. We are actually a modest small city in the Midwest. Because we have a lot of domestic drinking water, we have our wastewater system, we have our heating systems. So it's it's imperative that we contribute on this.
And just let me add that Jeff is very ingenious how he does his job. When I was the principal of Elmira Elementary, I had kids going down the top of my school knocking these big metal things off the school which were three hundred dollars a watt. So we didn't have cameras then and just put a trail camera up there. We had great photos of kids going up the ladder, taking a good swing and knocking them. So when I talked to him the next time, I go, boys, I have pictures.
Oh, I provided the pictures you provided in September.
We didn't lose any more three hundred dollar devices on weekly basis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Bye.
I was going to present it from my office, but since you're right here, no, okay?
It sure is just to be
Or do you want me to go do it from my office? I'm sorry. Yep, that's it. And I'll try to go quick. We've got a lot of reports tonight. What I wanted to do was give you guys an update on two different funding sources that we've been doing a lot of work with the SIA, which is the Student Investment Account, Student Investment Act and that elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. That's our ESSR dollars that you've probably heard a lot about. So the two biggest differences, the SIA is a state funded account as part of the Every Student Succeeds Act and it's ongoing. So we we get to continue with community engagement. We get to continue with our staff input and we get to kind of keep building on it. What's different about ESSR is that it is that funding source that's in response to COVID and it goes away.
What are you doing, Michelle?
It's not screen sharing.
Oh, okay. Well, you can, I don't have any notes or anything. Sorry, everybody.
There you go.
Okay. And you can go to the next. Oh, I'll say one more thing. Student Investment Count is really about meeting students' mental and behavioral health and academic achievement for our disadvantaged students, different vocal groups. Whereas ESSR is for all kids, but really making sure that we're responding to the pandemic and unfinished learning. So for SIA, what I did was I broke it into staffing, student services, prickling, things like that. So staffing positions that we've got filled. We've got a technology support assistant, a district nurse that we're working on. We've got an options IA. We've got an elementary PE teacher in there because that was a grant. We initially added those elementary teachers a few years ago with a grant. And so now we've been able to add them into this budget. We added CTE teacher time. We've got added a teacher at the middle school, high school counselor. We added a whole counselor, but only half of it's being paid for out of SIA. Elementary counselor for the first time since I've been in the district and my position helps maintain the grants. What we have open is this district nurse job that we're trying to fill. We have a one point O community liaison, family supports coordinator. That's probably one of the things that I'm most excited about. If we could just get somebody in the position and their job is literally to help our families connect more to the buildings and teachers and services in our community. And then we added a behavior support at the middle school that we haven't been able to fill. It was filled, but then it, you know, people just kind of keep moving around. So lots of positions. On student services, some of the things that we've done, free high school athletics, which is great for those families. We do have some monies allocated to our school farm for supporting them and our field trips there. And you guys are going to get to hear all about the great stuff they're doing. We added a translation services contractor so that we can really make sure we're providing whatever our families need. One thing that we is not fully implemented is after school programming. All buildings are working on this right now and all buildings have a fund for it. It's just really hard to logistics and then, you know, trying to process through. We're doing all these mitigation things during the day. And then all of a sudden you throw those out the window and say, okay, everybody come on, you know. So we're we're working on it, but hopefully by spring break, we'll have a solid plan there. Next one, we've been able to purchase some curriculum. One of the things that's happening in education right now is digital platforms. And there, there's not really a general fund budget for that because it's a, it's a kind of a new thing. You used to get your textbooks, but now we've got IXL. We've got all these different platforms that you have to pay annually for. So that's something that we've added some funding. Facilities, you've heard some of that stuff. Professional development, we're really trying to focus on this positive approach to student success program, TBIS stuff, targeted PD dollars for staff and admin and then supplies and materials, tons of stuff over there. That's a, that's a hundred thousand dollars plus of stuff. Ranging from just getting a program going to CTE supplies and tools, new band equipment, lab equipment, athletic trainer, health room, community engagement and then devices and hardware. So for ESSR, these are positions that we've been able to add in this year and hopefully next year. We've had to add a TOSA for the CDL support. And we were able to just have one teacher for our kiddos that were not able to come back on site. That position's kind of shifted now to another emergency sub. Even with two emergency subs, it is really hard to cover the needs for our staff. I would say we're very fortunate to be one of, I mean, I have friends in many districts, they closed because they don't have staffing. And even with having two subs almost available to us full time for emergencies, we've been close. We've added the options teacher. More of my position, a business office assistant and an options IA. So with with new funding also comes new people having to deal with the process of it. So that's for some of that. Some of the student services that are already implemented, we've got a parent student supply fee scholarship. So no parent was asked to pay any dollars that they couldn't afford. We can cover all of those behavior supports and incentives for K-12. That's usually something that we do at the elementary level and middle school and high school don't necessarily have those dollars to support funding activities like that. And so we were able to give them some more of that. We're gonna, we're committed to doing summer programming for the next three years, which is amazing. And and with a budget that can do a full K-12 program versus just, you know, one or two small groups. We also have a technology fee scholarship because the high schools move one to one with devices. And so really making sure that our families that, you know, teenagers are teenagers and devices are expensive. So if our families weren't able to pay for that, we were able to cover that. And then that after school funding is also being supported out of ESSR as well. Curriculum, more of this digital kind of curriculum and digital pieces to help the district run better. Professional development, there's a lot of work being on being focused around equity and response intervention. So making sure that students, that unfinished learning piece, that getting up to to par, you know, that Zoom was hard for kids. There are not very many kids that thrived in it. So there's a lot of work to be done for everybody. Engagement and appreciation, transportation's another area that I I feel so fortunate that when I talk with my friends in education, there are poor bus situations. You know, when Portland Public was offering parents forty dollars a week to pay for their gas and get kids to school, we just haven't had to deal with that. And so that's been really great. Staff appreciation acknowledgement for getting through this, community engagement funds. Really part of most of that is paying for a survey device. So Survey Monkey will have some sort of parent input coming out before spring break for community, parents, staff and students. And that's just, it's a lot of putting it out and then trying to digest it. And so that's one of those buttons. And then like you heard, PPE, masks, filters, sanitation supplies, things like that. Things that are coming up, we've got the community Q and A and I know Tiana was on there, but again, when when Gary's doing these Q and As and I'm on there every single month and we get one parent that's attending to ask us questions about what's going on is it's it's hard. So, but we've got those going still. I do admin updates at our admin meetings. And then we've got these updated upcoming engagement surveys. And then hopefully, you know, we'll be able to do some things more in person. I'm also working really hard to get a youth equity council at the high school. That's some of it. I think that's it. Do you see how fast I went, Trey? Do you guys have any questions? Great. There's a lot to it. And I, but one other thing I would add is that Oregon did just put out like a hundred and eighty page document two weeks ago. They're integrating six different grant initiatives. If you haven't heard about that, so I'll, I'll keep you all posted on that too. It it will ultimately make my life easier, but right now it's going to be really challenging to take six different grants and funding sources and align their vision, their goals, their budgets. Well, they're all spent. It's just trying to connect it. So.
Well, thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report. Okay, a few things I want to go over. One, obviously we got to hear today from Gary Christian. The next month I'm going to be inviting apparently Gary, these Garys are great guys. This guy's Gary Swanson. I don't know where I fell off the tracks. Gary Swanson is going to be donating nearly three hundred thousand dollars for this. So I met with him, he reached out a few months ago, started talking to him, great guy, obviously Swanson lover. He's doing a similar thing to Mr. Christian, except his scholarships may focus on CTE. So the details haven't been worked out. It won't be in place for this cycle, but he's finalizing with, it'll be run through our community combination, just like Mr. Christian's money. So I will be inviting him, assuming all this stuff is wrapped up before the March 4 meeting. It sounds like Mr. Christian did, talked a little bit about his family. It's obviously tremendous foundation for the district and how we'll be utilizing it with our CT students and scholarships. I wanted to share that. I wanted to share that we finalized a contract with Camp Blahie. So it will be out for school this year with graders. The dates are April eleventh to fourteenth. Is Andrew here? Andrew's here. Hi, Andrew. Can you hear me? We'll see if Andrew is sleeping or
Yes, I am here.
Okay. Well, you listen to what I have to say here. If you have any questions. So Andrew is the So Andrew is the regional manager for First Student. First Student is our transportation provider. Last year in January, uh, so essentially a year ago, we renewed our five year contract with them. You'll recall, uh, I, we were in conversations, because of the uncertainty of COVID, I wanted to extend it for a year. For obvious reasons, First Student, that is advantageous to them, there's stability of their employees, et cetera. Uh, they wanted a five year contract. Um, I talked to them about it, uh, we went out for an RFP. Um, well, we, we extended their five year contract through June of twenty twenty-six. Um, so now we are, you know, eight months into this contract. And we, they are having significant employee shortage issues. Uh, the drivers do not make a lot of money, they do not get health insurance, um, there is not a lot of benefits. And so Andrew, and they've been bargaining uh with the drivers, they've been, they've been bargaining on this contract through this year. So we're operating without a contract. Um, and they've come with a proposal. Um, and it's a proposal that many other districts are, are accepting. Uh, locally closest to us, the, the two districts that use First Student, again, that are close to us, are Bethel and Junction City. Um, it's my understanding, maybe Andrew can clarify, but I think pretty sure Bethel's already kind of signed off on this. And Junction City is about to, but it's, it's essentially equates to um to around a twenty-five percent wage increase. Which is huge, especially when we're eight months into a one year contract. At the same time, there's an element of our contract that says, uh, that says, if the district doesn't like, like First Student.
You said one year, but it's five years, right?
Fine, okay, eight months into this contract. There's an element of our contract that said, hey, I'm just frustrated with Andrew and First Student people. We can give them a hundred and eighty days notice and we're, we're cutting ties. They have the same ability to do that, they could say, hey, we can't find drivers. They're all going to the other districts that have accepted this wage increase, which essentially gets our first year drivers to around twenty dollars an hour. Uh, I believe, um, or we're going to have to cut ties. Obviously, we don't want that, that were to occur, then we'd be going out for an RFP to somebody's transportation provider. It would now be going up, you know, current market statistics, and the cost is going to be there anyways. So while I don't like it, uh, I'm in support of this. Um, and so I believe, yeah, I need to do some work with Quana. I believe uh the, the net cost to us, because remember we reimbursed seventy percent of transportation. So for every dollar we spend, um, we get seventy cents back and it costs us thirty cents. I believe the cost of each year will start at around sixty thousand dollars and go up, you know, over five years. Um, I am going to talk to Andrew, one of the things I'm going to consider is, is uh shorten our five year contract to four. Uh, because I will be, you know, one of the reasons they have given us Esser dollars is to help with the response to COVID. Well, one of the reasons we're in driver shortage and we're at this uh issue is COVID. And it's, it's why we're in this spot. So I might try to use Esser dollars to help with this shortfall for three years. Uh, that ends um in the fall of twenty-five. So I would, one of the things I'll be talking to Andrew is about shorting our contract to four, just to clarify. Anyways, I just wanted to get this on your radar, because there will be problems solved with Andrew over the next week or two. Uh, we need to make this decision quickly. One of the things that First Student has offered to do, if we come to this agreement, is they're going to pay the increased cost per issue. Uh, so internally, they're going to give these drivers this raise, and they're going to pay that cost through June. Starting in July, we'll have, we'll be under uh, be our responsibility. Okay, Andrew, did I leave anything critical out before I see if the board has any questions for you?
I, I think you covered it very well, Gary, and I appreciate that. We, we thoroughly enjoy a partnership with the district, and we do not want to do anything to jeopardize that. I just, we want to get more drivers to get these students to school, that's the bottom line.
You guys have any questions for Andrew or me? Okay, so this should be something in my spare time here in the next week or two. I'm going to spend some time on, get some solid numbers, talk to Andrew, um, come up with a plan. This, eventually this will come up before the board to approve this contract. Uh, but I, I imagine, uh, as long as Andrew and I can come to an agreement about the logistics, that I'll give it a go ahead before it comes to the board. All right, thanks for coming, Andrew.
Absolutely, thank you for having me.
I'll reach out to you later this week.
Sounds good, I'm available all day Saturday too.
Okay, sounds good. A few other topics I want to touch base on, I kept you in the loop, you know, we finalized the contract agreement with the administrators. Um, and got it a lot tighter after meeting with an attorney. I remember in our district office group, uh, there was like seven different contracts, which was just a pain in the neck for everybody. Well, the big person's a pain in the neck, where's Michelle? So I'm working on, I just got my first draft done uh over the weekend, uh, and I'm getting some feedback from Quana. My hope is in the next couple of weeks, that will be finalized and signed up on, the administrators have signed up on this. District Nurse, I just wanted to mention, we, you know, we've been contracting this year with Ms. Elliott, she's been fantastic. But she's really just been doing COVID stuff, not traditional district nurse things. She's applied for our open district nurse job, I hope to interview her, if not this week, early next, and she'll be on board. So that's great, I had a meeting last week with the options staff. So just know we're looking at right now problem solving, how do we want options to look going forward? Is it going to stay K-12? Is it going to go six twelve? Is it going to, maybe even just go nine twelve? And then the impacts of that on the budget, reducing staffing, it's over there, where are they going to go? Um, the, for example, let's say we change our options program to just be six twelve. Then, you know, right now we still have this three percent cap issue. Um, what that would mean is that any family, we kind of go back to where we were before, we might go back there anyways, once we get out of COVID anyway. Uh, here, hopefully soon. The, we used to be, we didn't care, if the parent wanted to enroll their kid in an online school, we supported that, it was the best choice. Uh, you're their parent, if you want to transfer to Junction City, Crow, we release. If you want to film here, we accept it. We've continued that relationship, we, we release kids to attend any other district that they want. Uh, it's a brick and mortar district, but in this three percent cap issue, because it just exploded. And was going to have a negative impact on the kids that were still here in our district. We, like most districts, had already done it for a long time, said we're going to implement this. Uh, so one thing I would just make the board aware, but if we decide to go back to six twelve, that three percent cap issue will go away at the elementary. When we turn back to, an elementary parent could say, oh, I enroll my kid in pensions academy. And I'd be approving that, because we don't offer an in-house alternative online K-five much. So I'm having though, there's a lot of logistics, we've got some communications with ODE this week. Mr. Cooper's kind of taking the lead on the structure and what that looks like. But certainly before this budget cycle, in, in our, in our budget document this spring. Um, it will include what our options program is going to be. Uh, so over the next few months, we'll be making those decisions. Um, good news on the COVID front, today was the first day in a long time. We're down to literally one person in our district out on isolation. And they come off, they're back in school tomorrow. So absent, a positive case tonight, but whatever. Tomorrow will be the first day in our district in months that nobody has been uh out because they're positive. We're out as a result of the closed contract. Uh, Miss uh Nurse Elliott's on track. Masking, which is the last topic of the, so I'll try to be brief, because I don't have a lot more information to add, other than, you know, it's probably. I don't know how long ago, it seems like three years ago, they announced uh, March thirty-first was going to be this masking date. And then uh, March nineteenth, started, you know, we started to do some things internally when it came out March thirty-first. Had principals lead discussions in buildings, see where staff were. I think a couple of our buildings were kind of fifty fifty on what they wanted to do. And a couple were maybe more seventy thirty in favor of going to optional masking. We didn't raise a hand and take a vote, uh, we just heard kind of the concerns from staff that. Um, on each side of the argument, we kind of took, took notes on that. I would say that I think, you know, it's certainly not an overwhelming majority, but I do believe the majority of our staff want to try uh to go to optional masking. Uh, with the contingent that it doesn't push us to remote learning. Nobody wants to um go into optional masking, masking if that's the result. So um, obviously on Friday, I informed our staff that my plan was to go to optional masking on the nineteenth. And then on Sunday, uh, put that on the website and social media. And then like usually happens, twenty-four hours, like to, you know, information. Um, currently, my plan would be to stick with our date of the nineteen, um, for a couple of reasons. One, we still don't have a ready school safe learner guidance. We're told it's supposed to come Wednesday, um, but who knows? Once that comes, I have a Thursday meeting, all Lake County superintendents do with Lake County Public Health. I want to understand with Lake County Public Health, what their relationship is with the district. Are they considering themselves a local authority, it's going to tell a district? Are they going to advise the district, are they going to strongly advise the district? What's the language going to be? And if they can tell the ready school safe learner language comes out, they won't be able to know, so they're going to tell us that. Talked to our insurance carrier yesterday, uh, PACE. They are committed to, once the guidance comes out Wednesday, by Monday, give districts an assurance of their interpretation of um. Uh, how recovered, liability, the districts that are big on, depending on the neutral path that they might choose. And the next Wednesday, uh, vast majority superintendents around the state will meet with Bahamut Wood Law Firm. Where they're going to talk to us about employee liability, requirements to bargain with associations based on these new mandates. Or ADA requirements that we need to make sure we're following. So it's really not going to be till next Thursday, but they even have all the information to kind of make uh, uh, a plan. Um, we'll need to do some new staff training, we'll need to implement some, uh, you know, kind of double up on some of our protocols. So currently, but it could change, it could change in twenty minutes. Currently, my plan is the Monday after, the Monday after spring break, uh, for us to be in an optional masking environment. I try to encourage and support students and staff who want to continue to wear masks. And do the same for those that uh do not want to. Uh, but um, you know, some of the things you heard here tonight around, uh, well, don't follow ready school safe learners. Though that's not in, in my guidelines. We'll be following everything that's in the guidance. Uh, to not do that, it would put every teacher's license in our district in jeopardy. Uh, it would put our district in jeopardy, it would shut down our district immediately. Because the vast majority of our staff would not show up for work if we weren't following what the health leaders are telling us we need to do. So that's my plan, as I said, it could change, but my hope is that Monday after spring break, uh, that's what things will look like here. Okay, that is my.
Well, thank you. First reading of proposed policy administrative rule updates. Um, let's see, I actually have a couple of questions. I'm sorry, just a minute. Okay, so the first um, first uh comment that I have is just that in the very first um. Policy, there's, there's a typo, so I'll just send that to you, Michelle.
Okay, in this AC?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm going to, let's see, uh, page eighteen. Um, uh, BD slash BDA.
Say it again?
The board needs.
Yeah, so um, under number two, emails sent to other board members will have the following notice. I'm not sure that I understand.
Where are we at?
No.
It's the uh, it's on page, it's on the third page.
It's on the third page at the very bottom, oh, there. Please do not reply or forward this communication. If this communication constitutes a decision or deliberation toward a decision between and among the form of. We're, we're not supposed to do that.
No, I mean, I mean, obviously Gary and Michelle don't create this language. So I have another question, OSBA, you know, what is that, are we getting that here? It's, you know, I scan through this stuff, I don't know. Um, please do not reply or forward this communication. If this communication constitutes a decision or deliberation toward a decision between and among the form of, which could be considered public. Um, so yeah, I think it's more, well, I don't, I don't want to speculate. I'll get the attorney from OSBA to give us a, what I understand he's saying is, why do I even need that? Because we don't do that, right?
Right, and, and if, if there is a notice, I don't think it should be this, I think it should be.
Like the one on my email is at the bottom, that's the one we started using.
Right.
Beginning this school year, and yeah, so this is, is a result of, um, well, obviously, obviously it's a result of new updates to the policy. But I'll reach out to uh, um, someone and.
Thank you.
Because it seems like a good question to me as well.
Um, and then on compliance and work reporting standards, uh, that's uh CM. And it's just a one page. Um, so the district's annual report will be presented orally at a public board meeting by November first of each school year. So.
Division uh, you know, they used to do that, Division twenty-two.
Uh-huh.
Uh, report at a different time of year, they changed it this year, um, is it October that we did it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the October board meeting, I knew the division, this is telling me that, just a reminder. That uh, now Division twenty-two is in October for that year that we just finished.
Okay.
Um, it used to not be that way.
Okay. And I don't, oh. I don't feel like, uh, so let me, let me tell you where I am. Suspected sexual conduct with students and reporting requirements, and let's see, where.
JHFF?
GBN slash JHFF.
The policy or the AR?
Uh, let me, um.
I think it's the top one, because the way she read it was students and reporting requirements in that next.
Yes, it's, it's the first. So I, I feel like this, this needs to, this needs to be stronger. Um, I don't feel like. This, so I think that the, the steps need to be clearer. So contractors and I'm. Sorry, I'm getting tired and I'm having some trouble finding words. So um, so for example, uh, in. Just a minute. Okay, uh, any electronic communications with students by contractor, agent or volunteer for the district. Will be appropriate and only when directed by district administration. I think that, that someone in the district, a teacher or an administrator. Needs to be copied on any emails that are being sent by non-district personnel. But, uh, yeah, to kids. I just, in this day and age, it just really does not seem like um. It's okay for us to just be letting contractors or agents or volunteers.
Or district employee as well. That's the way it reads, a district employee, contractor, agent or volunteer. I think, I don't know, I haven't read the whole policy.
I, I think that it's, it's the non, non-school employees. It just, that's just a suggestion, I'm.
I'm trying to think of an example, I just volunteer, right? But I can think of any contractor, example, a contractor, you have, or an agent. Um, maybe some like, uh, you know, some. You know, some Booster Club volunteers, some dancing girl athletes or something. But also, I'll just look in the.
I don't know.
Maybe spend some time on them too, and I know I have a Title IX thing coming up like next week. Maybe I can bring it up and pay for my.
We do have, well, it's a little bit different. We do have strict practice around text. Right? I don't know, there's no reason. You know, all texts begins to be in a group type. Environment. Really, that comes, it's most common in with teams. That's how we were supposed to go. Practice change. So the language is a little bit stronger. Obviously, not quite as strong as for email, so I'll read, I'll make a note, I'll read through it a little closer. You know, we can. We get these models, right?
Right.
From the OSBA, we can adjust.
Yeah.
Depends how much we adjust, whether they're going to support. Right?
Yeah.
So if we, let's say you just want to go, heck, you don't care, you can do whatever. Well, just know that they're not going to be there to support us. And the converse can be true. If we want to make it, you know, extreme the other way, we might lose their support in helping us enforce that when somebody violates it. So I'll read through it a little closer. If you got any specific suggestions, you know, email me.
Okay. And I may be just having an overreaction to.
I don't think it's an overreaction.
Mama bear reaction.
Yeah.
And then finally, freedom of expression, IB. So high school student journalists, number two. Okay, it's, it's down further. A little bit further. Okay, so. Number two is obscene, pervasively indecent, or vulgar. Who, who is going to determine that?
I think it's kind of, usually in this kind of speak, it's the reasonable person.
Okay.
That's what attorney is going to tell us. If, now, they might say very unreasonable, but we would. You know, this came out of, I can't think of the exact case, but the main one is the. Is the graduation speech. Where the, you know, this kid was sanctioned, had his speech proofed and, and the school said.
No.
Everything was sexually in window and this kind of thing. And that's the term. The reasonable person. The reasonable person finds it obscene, pervasively decent, or vulgar. You know, we were, if we were, and it's come up, it came up when I was at the high school. Around this kind of thing, we would reach out to a attorney and ask for their opinion.
So do you think that we should just say that in this?
Or we use the term reasonable person?
Yeah.
That's, that's the standard of laws.
Yes, but that, but students aren't necessarily going to know that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into that.
And, you know, and not necessarily parents either in some situations, so. Okay. I'm done.
Oh.
Good job.
May I ask a quick question? I can email you. Can we see this if we go to the school board meeting? Are we able to click on the links and open that? Okay, thank you.
These are all first readings, right?
Yes, yeah.
So no action tonight. Good comments from Andrea. I'll get feedback before the next board meeting. And you guys recommend changes or for somebody to recommend it.
Anyone else have? Twenty twenty-two superintendent evaluation. Was that Tia? No, Gary did.
I did.
No, it's Tiana.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, Tiana, did you put this on here?
Yeah, I'll.
You put that on there together. I'm sorry, I was just trying to get myself back into the meeting. They're due before the next March meeting. And Michelle and I worked together and created it as a. Fillable Google Doc, so when you put it in, it will all go to one place that, that Michelle has access to, so it'll make compiling those reports a lot easier.
Yeah.
We're using the same. Thing that we used in the past, which is what Oregon School Board Association recommends that we use for evaluating the superintendents. It's come from an outside source. And I think, and Michelle can confirm, but I think that we were going to mail those out this week.
Yes, correct.
And we were going to give them till the, was it the ninth of March to respond?
Yes. The ninth, just, we can even do a little bit longer, I guess, for having it compiled into a spreadsheet. We'll make the turnaround time on mine a little bit faster. And then you, we can have an executive session on March fourteenth.
Okay, I don't have anything to add to that. Does any, any of the board members have any questions about that process or? Does that seem like a reasonable period of time for you to get feedback?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Unless you can't see me, I'm like.
She can.
Yep.
Well, that was short and sweet then.
Thank you, Tiana. Triangle Lake co-op.
Okay. And we have a paperwork, but don't, okay. So co-ops, remember, they're with a smaller school. Typically, it's been Crow, Triangle Lake, doesn't have enough kids to field a team. They ask if they can be partners or less. In general, I defer to the head coach. I'm in sport, but I want to help kids if they want to play. However, if the head coach says. You know, no, for whatever reason, we don't want to do that this year. So refer to head coach, yes, they want to do this. It's a training, it's a co-op with. With Triangle Lake, you know, it's on fault, so we'll need to. There'll be board action and then it needs to be signed. I do want to mention something about these co-ops. That we've probably done one every year for the last several. They'll probably be going away. Because one of the things they do with co-ops is that, remember, next year we're moving to three A. So we're one of the bigger schools in three A. When we do a co-op with Crow, their enrollment gets added to ours. So when we've been at the bottom of four A, we can pick up Crow, heck, we can probably pick up Triangle Lake and Maplewood, and it still wouldn't get us to enrollment. It's at the upper end of the marsh fields and the cottage groves. Now that we're going to be one of the biggest schools in three A, co-ops will not be able to happen because once we add Crow's enrollment, it's like, whoa, you're a four A school now. So this might be the last one for a while.
Hmm, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the Triangle Lake co-op first stop.
I second. Been moved in second. It has, does anyone have any discussion? Tiana, what do you say?
Yeah. Say aye.
Yeah, find that unmute button. Everyone else?
Aye.
I five zero in. And Oregon Battle of the Books, I, I asked for this to be on here. Even though Emily is off to college, I still apparently in charge of the. High school level regional battles and. So this year, the, the regional competitions are particularly important because there's not going to be a state tournament. And so. And they are also going to be remote. And so we actually have some schools over in Hermiston. And so that would be kind of interesting. And we also have, used to be, you know, like. Nine at the most. The very most. And this year it's going to be at least eighteen. So. I just wanted to let you know that I'm looking for volunteers, so moderators, scorekeepers, timekeepers. I, I think I'm going to set up in the. EHS library, just so that. Forrest Cooper can, and Ian and Jeremy can all help me with the logistics of the very the huge number of remote rooms that we're going to have to monitor all simultaneously.
What's the date on that?
April sixteenth. So. Also, anyone in the, anyone in the audience, I'm happy to have you volunteer.
Is that for all ages or just the high school?
It's just the high school.
But is, and that's set up the same as the elementary school?
It, it, well, no, so.
Similar.
It is, yes, the battles are all similar. But the regions. Particularly this year are different because, you know, at the elementary school level, there's tons of schools and participants. And then when you get to middle school, there's a lot of schools and participants. And then when you get to the high school, it really drops off because there are just so many demands on the high schools, the schoolers' time. But the. The way that it's moderated, the way that it's score capped, the way that timing, it's all going to be the same. And. If. Amira and Venita have OBOB teams this year, they, they will be in a region and at some point. We have a meeting tomorrow, March first, at seven PM of all the regional managers. And so that's going to give us some information about how do you distribute questions? And that kind of thing. And after that, if you have students participating, then you'll probably start to hear more about dates and that kind of thing. So personnel. There are no licensed employee resignations. Yay! That's, that's amazing. Non-licensed personnel report. Any. This is also a small report, so yeah, not too.
Yeah, I think this was referred to, that Larson came over here, he's a daycare custodian from seven point five oh class, I position of middle school. We also, Jacob Johnson was an IA at Amira Elementary. He's now on the tech team. Well, transfers there, coaches, he's been in the hiring. And then non-resignation on the I A side. Gee.
All right, now it's your turn. Yay!
Thank you.
Just letting you know when you want this.
Do you want to stand?
Yeah, come on, Chris.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Trey Hackey. Thanks for having us tonight. I'm the director for the Growing Future School Farm. This is Rich Hackey. He is the president of Sea Mercy, which is the nonprofit that the school farm runs under or is like operates under. Tonight, we're here to talk about the progress the school farm has made since 2020. Some of the projects we are working on for 2022 and to share with you some of the curriculum ideas that we've been working on as well. First off, I want to say thank you to the district for allowing us to use the school property to build a farm as well as using the school's water to irrigate it. We've done our best to make sure that the building of the farm has not been at any cost to you all, but to give you a quick overview of the farm, we have a video that we put together to kind of show you some of the fun highlights. And some of the cool things we've been able to build since 2022, so keep it crazy.
Good job!
Thanks. I think Quinn was in like maybe one of those chats.
Hey, guys, how's it going? Welcome to this week's recap video. We've had a really busy week. And actually, a lot of it has been really nice weather up until about like a day or two ago. And we had a cold front come through. It snowed this morning. Not a lot of it has stayed around. But we have tomorrow night supposed to be twelve degrees. And then we're supposed to heat right back up into the thirties at night and fifties during the day, which I'm very much.
She smashed that like subscribe button. So originally in 2019, we brought the proposal to the district. And we had this five to seven year plan for the farm. In this plan, we would continue to steadily build more and more as the funds came in. But in 2020, we were awarded a grant from the Department of Education that took our five to seven year plan and just kind of crunched it into ten months. And so also in early 2021, we were awarded a grant from the Oregon Community Foundation. This grant gave us the ability to continue building the programs and projects that we were not able to finish from the previous grants. We also had some amazing help from local donations like Figaro's, Countryside Pizza, Jerry's and Home Depot, and a few smaller grants that gave us the ability to hire our summer interns. Because these grants and donations, we were able to build a farm to almost completion in about two years rather than five to seven years, all during the time of COVID. And what I'm going to talk about is just some of the cool highlights we had. So in 2021, we had our Earth Week event where we had over four hundred students from the elementary schools visit the farm, do some tours and activities. We had our big grand opening event where we had over two hundred community members come to the farm for activities, games, food, and tours. And where we raised over five hundred dollars in donations because of a small grant that we won from the Cow Creek Uncle Indian Foundation, say that five times fast. We were able to hire eleven high school interns, this high school students to intern at the farm from June to September. And they would work ten hours a week. And they also received work credits towards their education. We also co-hosted the summer school program, which is an amazing time where we had a little over a hundred elementary students where they learned about soil and bees and gardening. They had four forty-five minute classes each day for four days a week for the entire month of July. We also offered our CSA boxes where the school farm provided a weekly box to eleven families full of veggies and that raised upwards of seventy-five hundred dollars. And we also sold some of the produce at our local farm stand, raising over six hundred dollars. Throughout the fall, teachers would bring out their students and have some outdoor classes at the farm. Students would get, as you saw, got to pick their pumpkins, and they also got to kind of visit their old sunflowers that we'd be watering all summer long that they planted back in the springtime. And it's fun to have them kind of come back out there and see them, you know, about seven feet tall and. And it's fun to have them kind of come back out there and see them, you know, about seven feet tall, and, and to kind of see all the little sunflowers they planted. Um, really cool thing, this past week, I was able to showcase the school farm at the Oregon Farm to School Conference, where I had the chance to speak to over a hundred Oregon teachers looking to build a farm at their own school. Uh, in less than two years, it had become a showcase farm for the Farm to School Program, and one of the leading school farms in Oregon, which is why they wanted us to speak at their conference. Uh, these are just a few of the highlights that we had from the two thousand and twenty-one year. We're really excited to see what this upcoming year has for us in the two thousand and twenty U, two thousand and twenty-two year. Uh, but to speak more about the upcoming year, uh, Rich is gonna speak more on two thousand and twenty-two and our next steps for the school farm. Thank you.
Thanks, Trey. You know, uh, they, they did a, a research program on, on how kids learn faster when they're using their imaginations, you know, how you, when you incorporate that, how it incorporates something new. And it's, what was really cool is they had a, a quote that I wanted to share with you. It said, "When children use their imagination in play and learning, they're developing crucial psychological and emotional capacities that help them understand the world in which they live and their relation to it, and learn to solve problems, create new possibilities, even change the world." Uh, just, I love that last part. And the school farm is really about helping kids get, have the imagination to really change the world. And we want to incorporate that and build on that. We actually learned, uh, learned a lot in that during the, the Earth Week, where we had all the kids, uh, four hundred students, and, uh, from the K through five, uh, key, two elementary schools. The first two rotations that we had that came out here coming out twenty at a time, we're, we're, you know, we had great programs lined up, the learning centers and everything else, but they were just like going through the motions with us. We go, what is going on? And this reminded me, I went, you know, we're not, you see, the very thing we, we want to teach, we're not using. We're not helping them use their imagination. So the third group that comes out, we go, who wants to be a superhero? What's your favorite superhero? And all of a sudden, it was like, you know, oh, this, you know, they went, hello. And we said, we're gonna teach you how to be a superhero, a superhero for the school farm, to save the world, you know, and I went. And from that point on, the rest of the week, everything was so easy because the kids just fell in love with everything that we were doing. And it was just, they engaged their imaginations and we get to, we got to see it firsthand what was happening. You know, uh, we took it a little bit higher, as you saw in the video, you know, that opening scene, you see the hobbit door. Well, we took the Middle Earth theme to the next level, probably two levels up from there, and had fun with it. And, uh, and we're really building that theme around the school farm, that Middle Earth mindset, because we, you know, hobbits became the superheroes that were, they were really, you know, because they're farmers, they're known for being farmers. Uh, and I, you know, I really hope we exceeded, you know, period. I know when we first pitched this to you two years ago, you were kind of going, yeah, right.
Mostly because I didn't train.
Yeah. But, uh, I hope we exceeded your expectations on what's going on. And I know, you know, we had that five seventy plan and when it, you know, when we got the grant, it suddenly turned into that ten monther. And we were go, go, go. We didn't have volunteers because of COVID. It was just Trey and I and Michelle would come out, going, guys, I'm right.
Hey, I believed in you the whole time.
So we had a blast doing it. But our goal, you know, in moving forward from here is to, uh, make this a launching pad for the schools. K two five initially, really make it an incredible learning launching pad. Um, you know, in what we're doing, uh, we want to expand the school farm, um, programs in terms of like classrooms and hands-on experiences that they have, specific learning centers, um, events, festivals, and all tied to that Middle Earth theme on that side. Our desire is to work with you guys to kind of come up with how to integrate that into the school curriculum. You know, the school farm is there. All the hard work is really done, you know, in the sense of building it, you know. It's there. It's just, it's, we just added a, uh, pollinator garden with a gazebo out there. We've got a hobbit, uh, greenhouse, you know. It's not like a hobbit, but we pretend like it's a hobbit. And we give it to the kids, it's a hobbit greenhouse. So we have a lot of fun with that, but we want to, you know, we want to find ways to incorporate that into the K five learning, but eventually through the K twelve. We, we've already seen that with the summer interns coming out. They have a blast. They, you know, we've got some interviews. If you skip that one, you could go to another, you know, there's, we have a Growing a Future YouTube channel that'll talk about a lot of the different things and have, give you videos of what's going on. So there's, you know, there's a lot of potential in what's unfolding there. In the next three years, you know, we're, we're even asking, you know, we're, we're in the process of developing a curriculum, you know, a school farm curriculum. Uh, one of the things that we noticed when we were out there, we, you know, there's a lot of curriculum out there with different programs, but it's not all tied and meshed together. And on top of that, it doesn't have the imaginative aspect. It becomes like we were doing on the school farm and we're, you know, they're doing, they're checking the boxes, but there's, what's the reason? What's the why behind it? And so we kind of, you know, we've kind of started with a book that kind of gives you a backstory, but then moves into a box of learning that ties in with the backstory for the kids. And then we have the curriculum that we're building out that really is going to, you know, develop this, you know, it's a hundred and eighty lesson plan curriculum that will explore when there's a hundred and seventy-six left, because we got four of them built already. But we're, you know, we're on that way. And, um, you know, to make sure we did it right, we brought on this amazing, uh, passionate, you know, farming type person, you know, that really enjoys. She has the professional background as an educator, twenty years in K through five learning, and she's amazing. In fact, we even brought her along tonight. And she's gonna talk about the curriculum for you. Very, very well.
Thank you so much. So grateful to be here and share, uh, these guys' views with you and what they've asked me to help them put together. Uh, with the, I, they asked some, some complicated things. They wanted to give the teachers a little bit of a break somehow, and take some of their workload in, in at least the area that the farm, um, has these lessons. And make sure that the lessons meet the standards, so NGSS, those science standards for each grade level. So I'm giving you a packet that kind of runs down a lot of information, but I'll give you the highlights just to make that a little easier. And it's very easy, you are looking at it later and needing some reading material for all of your time. So each lesson will start with some kind of introductory story to kind of tie the lesson to that imaginary world that our K through five kids love to be a part of. The areas of learning that these gentlemen have put together for the farm specifically are on that next page. I'm sorry, they're, they're not numbered. I, I thought they were numbered, but they're not numbered, so you'll have to just catch.
Don't throw them in the air and.
But they're all broken down by hobbits and elves and dwarves with this fantastical idea. And then there's a curriculum map, overall view of how many lessons in each cohort. Basically, they're broken down into two different cohorts, K through two and three through five. And the first year, the plan is to have the same general lesson idea for K through two and three through five, another lesson idea, so that there will be thirty new lessons for cohort A and then thirty new lessons for cohort D. But then by year two, that kindergarten has moved up to first grade, so they would get a new lesson. And so those would be built for first and second share and for the fifth to share. And then by third year, all the lessons are in place. And there's a hundred and eighty total lessons. The lessons are kind of set up. They wanted options, these guys. Um, they wanted options for an after-school plan in case teachers need this for an after-school program. They wanted options for a summer school plan and for something that teachers can use during the school year. So there's an after-school plan that's two to two and a half hours per lesson. There's a summer school plan that's fifty to sixty minutes per lesson, and then there's the school year plan that's about forty-five minutes per lesson. And there's some basic requirements that are built into each lesson plan. There's some safety rules because these are labs, science labs, teaching the kids safety. Vocabulary, a science question, some research building on hypotheses, um, getting some informational pieces in a technology format, using tools and the process. Um, and then building a conclusion, make a claim, give a reason, give evidence. All of those pieces are built in based on the grade level complexity, complexity. Um, with some practical pursuits, you know, teachers have an instructional goal or an objective to each lesson. And we're kind of expanding that to also include a goal of joy. What can the, the kids really enjoy about this? What can they take away from it? And how will it, um, impact their lives and what they give? The part that's kind of boring for you guys, but teachers will probably love it. Um, each of the science standards in GSS are on a spreadsheet. They're set up with the areas of learning for the farm, and then the lessons that fit are in there. Hot buttons so that they can just select the lesson they're watching. And then, um, I have some sample lessons that are laid out. So each, to kind of relieve the burden on our teachers, the teachers would say, hey, I, I want to do the, the lesson about growing peas for my first graders. And they would tell these guys, I want to do this next week. And these guys would put together a bin with all of the supplies they need, all their worksheets and the lesson plan, and a little flash drive, say, all the materials, just in case they need extras, or they, a PowerPoint presentation they can present. What they're planting their peas in, it's got their soil, it's got the peas, except they'll be pre-soaked. I didn't soak these. And it'll have some kind of sticks to help those peas grow, and some markers to label their cups. There shouldn't be anything that the teacher knew was not in this bin. So there's the supplies. Then there is a lesson key. So let's say the teacher wants a real break, and they've got somebody else coming in to teach this for them. Well, the key is right there for the whole lesson. Some suggested answers the students might give, guiding them along, and a worksheet for the kids to take home, observe their pea as it grows, write something, a word or two, or draw a picture up to the side, and they can do their observation piece. And then in the classroom, they've got their lab worksheet as they're planting, shows them what it should look like. They go step by step, and they guide, the student, the teacher guides them with writing in the words from the board bank, and they can talk about living things versus non-living things. What do these peas need to grow? Et cetera. The same thing happens again in the upper grades. The example here is an owl pellet lab, again, all the supplies. But this one, because these are older students, they have some research provided, not just on a technology video, but also something to read along. Each of the teacher keys lists out the standards and what they should be learning in this lesson. And it provides some information about our precious spotted owl and the invasive species that's taking over their habitat. So the kids can talk about, uh, problems and how do we look for solutions? And then it teaches them how to build that hypothesis, not just talking about it like little kids, but actually writing out all the pieces, identifying during research, answering some questions, and then coming up with their conclusion, their point, their reason, and what evidence do they have to build on that? And based on what these gentlemen already told you about the student computing and community impact, I ran some numbers while they were printing stuff earlier this evening. Six hundred and fifty or more elementary students have been already impacted with over ten thousand hours of some kind of farm experience. Ten high school students had an accumulative volunteer and internship experience of over a thousand hours. Two hundred plus community members had an acute motive farm volunteer experience of eighty-one hundred hours. If they've already made this much impact, imagine what they're gonna do with some lesson plans and some labs available. And I just want to do that.
Thanks, Heather. You can tell we have no idea what we're doing. Now, we don't, she does. That's why we're bringing in the right people to really help us develop the curriculum. Uh, it's important to us to make sure that the curriculum is really is, is the same showcase appeal that our school farm. It is, um, if you look around, if you go in different areas, you will see, you know, school farms, you'll see little raised beds, you'll see different, but I don't think you'll ever see something like what we have up here. It's really, really special. And, uh, we're just looking forward to, you know, developing something that will go along with it. The, uh, the curriculum itself, you know, um, you know, we're not just building it for the, for Ridge School District, you know, we, we want to make this available to the whole state. Uh, so, you know, it kind of puts the permanent school district on the map in a whole bunch of different categories. But we really want to, to make this special. Um, the very, very last page, I think, is the, uh, budget that we're looking at. Uh, most of this is what we're trying for with, with grants, you know, as far as with the financial side of it. There's no guarantees, but, you know, what we're looking for is, you know, the, the support from you guys to just, you know, that you're kind of behind this. And we go, uh, go after grants if we don't have your support, you know, it's like, yeah, no, we, we don't even know what these guys are doing, who they are, anything else. It's kind of hard when they do some follow-up work on it. Like I said, we don't know that the, the grants are guaranteed. We, we've got some really matched ones right now. Uh, last year, two years ago, because of COVID, there was a lot of funds that were flowing around, that won't be flowing around in the future. Um, our goal with, with this curriculum is to get it into a point where our whole school farm is, is self-sustaining. And part of that is through a, I was just noticing what you were putting up there as far as on a, a digital format. It's more of a license, and that's what we'd like to do so that it becomes something that's self-funding as we develop this program over a three-year period. This would never be a charge to you guys, you know, for Ridge. This is just something for, if we make it available elsewhere. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, in terms of what's going on. We just want to be real transparent with you guys on what we're doing, where we're heading, uh, the directions that we're going. We just would love to, uh, anyway, you guys can support us, uh, get behind it. If there is after-school programs that, you know, might have funding, if there is, um, something that comes up that, you know, would open up, uh, a teacher that could be a part of the school farm that we can integrate in. Anything like that would be really, really helpful along the way. But we're super grateful for all that you guys have done and just believing in us in the last couple of years. And, uh, you know, I hope we, uh, can continue to develop this to the expectations that you have. So thank you very much. Any questions?
So this is primarily a, a, a elementary program, is that correct? At this stage?
Uh, at this stage, yes. Uh, at this stage, yeah. Since we've had the majority of our interest come from the elementary schools, we've kind of had our focus on our K through five. Um, we have our interest through our, kind of the, you know, nine to twelve via our interns, uh, the, the high school interns, the people that have come out and volunteered, or that we have kind of given a stipend to that have worked on the farm with me. Uh, but right now, the focus is the K through five, yeah.
I see a lot of potential with high school uh, with this program in terms of, um, like you could partner with like an area of business, like we have one down the road here, and they could do OJT's on the job training or C W E's. And it could also be something that we could train kids as, you know, not every kid wants to go to college, but they want to do like a trades thing. And farming is a trades thing, and that would be a kind of a cool thing, and maybe Doug Tell with L C C somewhere too.
Yeah, we, we had, well, we had Rob and Vincent, uh, who was doing, I think it's C T or a C W. I'm not sure which one, but she had.
She's C T, I think she.
Yeah, she had students from Willamette, uh, uh, High School as well as, uh, Almyra, and then they were coming to the farm, and they would donate, I think it was like four hours a week. They'd donate.
Why, that's funny, that's what they.
Youth representation. Yeah, yeah. And they'd come out to the farm and really help out. And that was awesome, because I'd have eight extra students out there, eight extra hands. We'd all just get a whole bunch of work done super fast. So, um, it's, that's kind of one of the things that in the high school kind of branched out too, which is really great.
Yeah.
Michelle made all of her teachers come out and work on that too.
Are we going out there for me?
No, you know, it really is like an incredible launching pad for, it's almost an unlimited amount of different things we could do with it. Um, you know, it's set to kind of be something much bigger than what it is right now, you know, in terms of just a farm. And, uh, it's meant to be this incredible learning experience, and it's from the design up, it's meant to capture their attention, uh, hold their attention. Hold their attention and get them involved in every aspect of it.
The Gates Foundation, a number of years ago, I was involved with a grant from the Gates Foundation. And I actually got to go to Stanford and I got a shirt. So I thought I was from Stanford. Except for that workshop, but. They were trying to do a program and they had grants for this where the high school students would learn a skill and ability or trade. And then they would go down to the lower grades and start teaching it. And it fostered a community sense. With the older kids, working with the younger kids and it was very successful.
Our goal is to start with a K, K two, five, you know, and work them all the way through. Not work them, that sounds horrible. Teach them all the way through, you know, their, their graduation. And so. As they get into the middle school to high school, they're looking back and going, I remember when we had a kid come out and stand there. He was picking up one of the CSA boxes and he kind of stood there. He's looking around. I go, oh, you know, I went out to help him, you know. He goes, yeah, I'm just here to pick up the box. He, what is this? And we walked him through and he goes. Why didn't we have this? How come we didn't have this when I was in school? This is so, you know, and those are the things that get us going, you know. Makes us kind of go, yeah, we got to put something like this more and more, you know, in front of the, the students of all ages. And so there's, the potential is, is incredible. It's just, like you said, lining it up and having the, the resources. We're, we're only able to do so much just by ourselves. We've got to be able to kind of expand out. You know, bringing in the talent to, to help and any other advice and, and support. That's kind of what we're looking for down the line. Any other questions?
What is required if we, if there was a decision to have established this curriculum? What, what would need to change or be done to make that happen?
You know, if, I mean, I know Gary has.
Couple things. One, this wouldn't be something, first of all, they say like, they've talked about, you know, they hit it out of the park. What, what Jay and Kim and his efforts have done there is tremendous. We're in a little bit of a eating time with COVID. This was normal times. I think we might be a little more progress in this area. But whatever a curriculum is, it doesn't work. It, it will never be successful. If Gary or Michelle goes to the elementary principals and says, hey, we're doing this new thing. So that, that will be destined for failure. This has to come from teachers. That think this is the best way to spend their valuable time to teach science or whatever standard it is that we're striving for. So I think kind of the next step is to try to, you know, I don't know, but engage these folks in some way. To garner their support or not.
And we did buy the $10,000 of SIA to help facilitate those visits, like between each building. So I know what I, my hopes and dreams were that we would like set up monthly visits and then get on a cycle and things like that, but.
What you're talking about though is lessons of the classroom teachers teaching in, in the room, right?
Incorporating that, yeah, to be, you know, to, you know, where it's, it can be incorporated there, but then also brought out to the school farm and tied together.
So we just need a larger conversation with folks that whatever, you know, we're talking about here, 20 minutes a day all year long. Isn't that the best way for them to be spending 20 minutes a day? And why is that? Because not very many minutes. Yeah. And I'm not saying it's not, but it's much more likely to be successful. They're the ones, you know, helping go through this process than Gary and Michelle saying, there's a new way we're teaching this. Open up your mind a little more.
Yeah, we had a bunch of the teachers from Elmyra, you know, elementary school that came over and kind of did a, kind of a group session. We just kind of brought them in and the feedback was really helpful and exciting and, and positive. It kind of got our juices flowing, kind of going, okay, let's go after this, you know, and. So anyway, I just think it's a, it's a real, I think it's a possibility to just work.
Yeah, really, I think we probably, I don't know, I would need to look into ODU requirements, but I think we would want to consider this something little material. Yeah, I'm saying it's a curriculum and got to put some other burdens on us. Yeah, I can't just, we can't just adopt any curriculum without going through a state process, waivers. I don't know. I would need to look into that a little bit more, but just know that. Like a supplement to our science curriculum, teachers can bring in things from current events or outside lessons, that kind of deal. I think it would be a totally, a totally different process, a little more extensive one. If we were calling this our, our Fermi School's for K through five science curriculum.
Thanks for the time, everybody. I know this has been a long night for you. Appreciate it. Thanks for your service.
I'm putting a reminder on my phone to reach out to you after spring break.
Awesome. Yeah, growingafuture.org is the website if you want to learn more about what's going on if you haven't already been there. So just, yeah, thanks.
Sure, we're a walkover sometimes. Yeah. How big are the trees now?
The second year that they've been in the ground will be this spring. So it's, they're, they're getting, they're getting a little bigger. We actually had an apple on, on one of the last years. So we might have some.
Have the year gotten in there at all?
No, we got that fence up there. They're not getting in. Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, any other late items? This has been a marathon.
It has been.
Well, yeah.
I would just want to congratulate you or shout out to Miss Cook Smith. Who couldn't sleep well this weekend thinking about all the technology, you know, we want to have these hybrid forms so that. We know that we're engaging more people when we're broadcasting. They can sit at their house and watch it, but it's difficult and. But very few hitches we pull it off, so.
I think you guys agree. Yeah. It went really well. I was having more trouble with my computer than you guys.
I don't have a computer, so there's nothing to do with me.
Okay, Gianna, do you want to close the session?
Oh, um, yes. Thank you again. One second. Thank you again, Andrea, for handling the chairing and everything worked pretty well. I was able to hear most of what was said even in the conversation. So thank you guys in the district office for making this happen. And we will adjourn, meeting adjourned. I don't have a gavel though. There you go.